Good evening. We'll go ahead and call the May 24th meeting of the Garden Grove City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Brightigum. Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Deidre Tuha Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
And Councilmembers Bowie and Klaffenstein are absent.
Let me ask if we can do invocation and pledge, and then I'll hand it over to Housing after that.
Okay, if I could ask everybody to please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening to consider the issues of our community, we ask for your presence in these proceedings. May your hand guide the decisions made here tonight for the benefit of all. We also pray, Lord, as we approach Memorial Day, that we may remember and always be grateful for those who have made the ultimate sacrifice on behalf of our great nation. Amen.
Please turn your face to the flag, place your right hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. And on that note, I'll go ahead and recess City Council and hand it over to Chair Brightigum to conduct the Housing Authority business.
Guess I will open the Housing Authority oral communications. Are we?
I thought we called roll first.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a good idea.
Okay. Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Chair Brightigum.
Here.
And Commissioners Bowie and Klaffenstein are absent.
Now we can go to oral communications. Are there any members of the public who'd like to address the Housing Authority? Seeing none, I will close oral communications. We'll move on to consent. Entertained a motion? Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Beckles. Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Deidre Tuha Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
And Chair Brightigum. Motion received. Six yes votes.
Any matters from Commissioners? Okay, here we know. We'll close the adjourn the meeting. The next meeting of the Garden Grove Housing Authority will meet Tuesday, June 28th.
Thank you. Okay, we will reconvene City Council. And that'll take us to Presentations, Item 1A.
Item 1A is a community spotlight for the Garden Grove Strong Heroes for their selfless acts of service during the coronavirus pandemic. And Assistant City Manager Ms. Dyke will read the community spotlight tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council is honored to recognize local heroes who answered the needs of the community during the coronavirus pandemic. Earlier this evening, the mayor and City Council hosted a brief reception to meet and honor 25 of our local heroes from each of our six districts. The heroes were presented with city mementos and certificates from county and state representatives, along with certificates from the City Council. Named Garden Grove Strong Heroes, these individuals, businesses, and organizations were nominated by Garden Grove residents for their selfless acts of service. Some of the heroic acts ranged from donating essential items such as face masks, gloves, and hand sanitizers, to providing free groceries and meals to those in need, as well as volunteering many hours of time. All of the Garden Grove Strong Heroes will be highlighted on the city's website, along with photos from tonight's reception. Once again, the Garden Grove City Council thanks these outstanding heroes and the Garden Grove community for displaying compassion, strength, and resilience during these unprecedented times. Congratulations to all of our heroes.
Thank you. That takes us on to oral communications. We do have several speaker cards, starting with Kyle Mason.
Good evening. I was here, I'd say roughly about a month, month and a half ago, and I want to thank you guys for finally fixing the fence. It got fixed today. It took that long. But the cell phone towers behind the women's club, you still got people living there. Please, we gotta get them out of there. The one gentleman says he's got the key, says he owns the property. I've heard so many BS stories from this one gentleman, I don't know what to believe. There's a guy staying at the women's club. His name is Daryl. I don't know what's going on. He used to communicate with me with the Neighborhood Watch, but I haven't heard a word from the man since September. So, and ever since then is when we've had nothing but problems over there with the homeless and everything else. I don't know what else to do. I've requested to have somebody from the women's club contact me regarding who makes the decisions of that property, and then nobody gotten a hold of me. I'm about ready to call my cousin who works with the feds and the IRS, and we're gonna go through and we're gonna find out what's going on. So however you guys want to go about it, I don't care. But I want to get these people out of there, please, one way or the other. Otherwise, thank you for taking at least fixing the fence. I hope they get that park going from Gilbert all the way to Magnolia back there. It would be great. Again, I've lived there 17 years, and I plan to live another, I think, 17 years. So, again, thank you.
Thank you. Tom Reber.
Hi, I'm Tom Reber. You elected, you Garden Grove staff, you police, and you Orange County Fire Authority work for we, the people. Why doesn't Garden Grove Police know 10.56.115, the RV ordinance? Why, when I call about 10.56.150, the Garden Grove Police always refer to 72 hours abandoned marking of the tires? Why is it so hard about 10.56.115 that a RV has to be parked in front of the property that has a water bill with a permit? Why was a RV parked for over a day and a half? Why, when I call 911 when there's an accident on Valley View in the bridge, Garden Grove Police keeps telling CHP that's their territory? Why, when Garden Grove leaves an accident on Valley View, that glass and plastic are still there on the streets? Where is the $685,000 for the first body cams? Why is it, when you put a concern into code enforcement, that the case always says with no reason, closed with no reason? Why, when you send emails to the mayor, the city manager, Garden Grove staff, and the Chief of Police, that silence and crickets are the only things I hear? With this identity woke stuff, do you realize, when you ladies in this building go to the restroom, that when the door opens, it could be myself walking in? You see, the Garden Grove Police cannot do nothing about that. How are you gonna prove if I was not a female at that time I entered the restroom? If you have daughters in school, do you really want a male to walk into the restroom with your daughter? Why is it that during this three-minute oral communication, that I stop at three minutes? Yet others have four and four and a half minutes? I am now a minority in Garden Grove. Where's my rights as a minority? Is there racism here? Have you seen the 2,000 mules? And tomorrow is Candace Owens, George Floyd, and the rise of the BLM. It is time for we, the people, to take back control when it has been overtaken by false words by the elected and by hidden monies within the 501(c)(3) organizations. Why is there Plexiglas still up? There's no pandemic. It's a plandemic. Thank you. Tom out.
Nick Dibs.
Mayor Jones, Members of the Council, citizens of Garden Grove. My name is Nicholas Dibs. I'm a teacher, longtime resident here in Garden Grove. We have a mental health crisis going on, not only across the country, but here locally as well. And recently, AB 2406 was presented to the Assembly. And Dr. Richard Freed, go to richardfreed, F-R-E-E-D dot com. He gave his testimony, which I'd like to play.
Thank you. All right, first witness, please. Thank you, Chair Stone, for allowing me to speak today. And thank you, Assembly Members Cunningham and Wicks, for your remarkable leadership on this issue. My name is Dr. Richard Freed, and I wrote the first major media article about this, about the social media industry's use of persuasive design, that these powerful behavioral psychology techniques which pull kids onto their platforms and essentially not let them go, and how that's contributing to a generation of kids who are struggling with depression, suicidality, and self-injury. But mostly, I am a clinician, day in and day out, working with families who are experiencing this national tragedy. I get to watch that unfold, and this tragedy, in my office nearly every day. The problem is that social media sites use this powerful behavioral science of persuasive design, which was developed at Stanford University. They use this very powerful tool, and it exploits young people's developmental and neurological vulnerabilities. Pre-teens, teen girls are remarkably sensitive, they can't help it, they're born that way, to be, have a fear of social rejection. And these companies, unfortunately, exploit that to use that to pull kids onto their sites and keep them there. And the founder of this science of persuasive design himself said that using persuasive design in that way is unethical. It's not okay. Facebook whistleblower Francis Haugen explains that when kids use Instagram, their internal documents talk about how it's an addict's narrative. Kids' use of Instagram is described within the company as an addict's narrative. And that's what I see play out in my practice. As kids can suffer the gravest consequences, they can be depressed, they can be cutting up their arms. They know that it's, they know these social media platforms are not healthy for them. Their parents know that, but nobody can stop it. The kids can't get off these sites, and the parents can't get these kids off these sites. It is truly an addict's narrative. The parents that I work with, and even the kids, are asking that something be done. I therefore urge your support on AB 2408, Cunningham and Wicks. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of your time.
Okay, I suggest we give a vote 14 seconds to the children that were killed today in silence. Thank you.
We've got that covered. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak that did not submit a card? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close oral communications. We will recess to Successor Agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Brightigum.
Here.
Member O'Neil.
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here.
And Member Klaffenstein and Vice Chair Bowie are absent.
All right, we already did oral communications. Takes us on to consent items. Just receive and follow the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Call to vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Any matters from Agency members? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to Sanitary District.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll call the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting to order. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Member Brightigum.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Vice President Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
And President O'Neil.
Here.
And Members Bowie and Klaffenstein are absent.
Thank you very much. We've already held oral communications simultaneously with Council. We have one item under consent. I have a motion for consent.
Move it.
Motion.
I'll take that as a motion in a second. Call for the vote on the consent, please.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Thank you. We do have one item tonight on items for consideration. I think we have our staff report. By the way, is this, this is a joint action committee with Council?
Yeah.
Do we do it all at this meet right here, and then I'll let you?
You can, you'll take separate action as City Council.
Thank you.
Item 3A is a word of contracts to DUDIC and JIG consultants for on-call construction management and inspection services for various sewer and water projects. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy. Mr. Chairman and Members of the Board. Tonight, the Board and the City Council are being asked to award two contracts, one to DUDIC and another to JIG consultants to provide on-call, part-time construction management and full-time inspection services for various water and sewer projects, specifically that have to do with our capital improvement program and land development. The land development also includes ADUs and some tenant improvements. Currently, the Division is experiencing a heavy workload due to ongoing CIP issues and a lot of ADU products. So these two contracts will serve as a supplement to staff as needed. Staff sent out four requests for proposal and received four responses. Staff reviewed and rated the proposals and determined that DUDIC and JIG consultants are the most qualified proposers and would provide the most qualified service to the city. Staff negotiated two professional services agreements for $500,000 each, and they are not to exceed contracts. Should the Board decide to award these, and the Council decide to award these contracts this evening, staff can begin utilizing these services by late June of this year. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Since a lot of this is being driven by development and ADU development, a lot of those projects do have a lot of permit fees, and anybody that needs a new sewer or water, they're paying for that, right? Correctly?
Yes, as allowed by state law.
As allowed by state law, okay. So we're just covering the workload. Thank you. That's all. Any other questions, staff? Yep.
Should the need not reach the contracted amount, you wouldn't just spend it to spend it, right?
No.
Say you only needed to use half of it, right? You're only using it as needed, correct?
As needed. And if it, we end up with, you know, $500,000 left on each contract, that's fine by me.
Budget not to exceed type of thing?
Yeah, it's a not to exceed contract. We're just gonna use them on projects as needed.
All right. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. A motion?
Second.
A second. Call for the vote. Thank you, Bill.
He likes us to stay here with our finger like this, waiting for.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
All right, thank you. Any matters from Board members? Seeing none, we will go ahead and adjourn until the next meeting, which is Tuesday, June 28th, in this room. Back to Council.
Thank you. We will reconvene City Council. That takes us on to Consent Calendar. It's recommended that 3A through 3H be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Do I have any requests?
I'll move it.
Second it.
Call to vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Alrighty, Public Hearings 4A. Go ahead, Omar.
Item 4A.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Item 4A is introduction and first reading of an ordinance adopting the Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy. And that ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Adopting the Garden Grove Police Department Military Equipment Use Policy Pursuant to Government Code 7071." And Mr. Sandoval is here to give the report.
Mayor, Members of the City Council, before you as an ordinance that would approve and adopt the City of Garden Grove Police Department's Military Equipment Use Policy. Last year, and effective this year, AB 481 was adopted by the state legislature, which requires each police department that has military equipment, as defined by state law, to adopt the policy, to be presented to the City Council, and then to be approved by the City Council by ordinance. I want to stress that the definition of military equipment per state law is not the same as the Army, Navy, Marines use. For example, beanbags and pepper balls are considered military equipment that are covered by this policy. Last month, pursuant to the law, the Police Department and my office worked together to put together the policy, and we presented the policy to you last month. It was, at that time, also posted on the Garden Grove Police Department's website for the public to be able to review it and to come and testify to it at this public hearing. The next requirement is that we have this public hearing before you introduce the ordinance to approve the policy. And again, the policy is attached to the ordinance in addition with the list of equipment that meets the definition of state law as military equipment. At this point, the recommendation is for the City Council to open the public hearing. And then after your testimony, you can close the public hearing and then approve the ordinance for first reading, and then pass it to second reading for your next meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And the Chief is here in case you need a demonstration on how to use any of this equipment.
Thank you. Colleagues, shall we go ahead and open the public hearing? Okay, I do not have any cards. Anyone wishing to speak on item 4A specifically? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues, questions, comments, or a motion?
Yeah, I personally, I understand it's state law, but I mean, I also see a lot of hiccups with this law because I don't think, you know, we have to post everything on the website and tell the whole world what equipment our police department has. And I think you're just arming the bad guys with more information, telling them, oh, this is what they have, this is, you know. But it is the law. I get it. So with that, I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion a second. Call to vote, please.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
All right, that takes us to Commission Committee Matters, Item 5A. Consideration of an Appointment to Fill the Vacancy on the Housing Authority Commission. I would like to nominate Tan Nguyen for appointment. Can I get a second?
Can we get a second?
Yep. Alrighty, call to vote, please.
Okay. Motion received. Five yes votes.
Great. Congratulations, Mr. Tan Nguyen. Items for consideration. Item 6A, now that's the one that we heard already. Do we repeat it?
Only the City Council wants to hear the report once again, but otherwise it's exactly the same report that.
I can repeat the title.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Item 6A, which is a word of contracts to DUDIC and JIG consultants for on-call construction management and inspection services for various water and sewer projects. And this item was acted on under the Sanitary District Board Action. This is a joint action item.
I propose we waive the reading, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Wonderful.
Second.
Okay, motion a second. Call to vote, please.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
All right, I understand we would like to continue 6B.
Correct. If we can continue to the next meeting, that would be great.
Just to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Do we need an action to do that?
We don't need an action, no. It'll just be on the next meeting agenda. It's not a public hearing, so we don't need formal action to continue it.
Got it. Okay, so we'll continue that one. Moving right along to ordinances presented for a second reading and adoption, Item 7A.
Item 7A is second reading of ordinance number 2933 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Amendment Number A342022, a text amendment to Chapter 918 Mixed-Use Regulations and Development Standards of Title IX of the City of Garden Grove Municipal Code to Establish Automobile Fleet Storage as a Conditionally Permitted Use in the NMU Neighborhood Mixed-Use Zone and to Establish Related Special Operating Conditions and Development Standards."
Thank you. Colleagues?
I would just like to comment because I missed that meeting, and I was, this is in District 2, and I strongly support this. It's gonna clean up the area that the gentleman tonight was speaking about, next to the women's club. There's a whole new fence, security features, landscaping going in at that project. And at that time, I've already spoke to the women's club, and that whole area will be cleaned up because that fence will be set back from the women's club property. But it, new lighting, security cameras, and the women's club has signed a form to let the police, no trespassing on their property, so that they will enforce that no trespassing law if it's on their property, which will be very easy to define now that we have the people moving in next door. So just wanted my colleagues to know that I'm in strong support of that, and I'll make a motion to move that.
I would second it.
A motion a second. Call to vote, please.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
7B.
Item 7B is second reading of ordinance number 2934 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, California, Adding Chapters 892 and 894 to Title VIII of the Garden Grove Municipal Code Establishing Regulations Prohibiting the Unlawful Possession of Catalytic Converters in the City and Repairs and Sales of Bicycles and Bicycle Parts on Public Property."
I make a motion for that.
I'll second it.
Was that your baby?
Yes, that's my baby.
Call to vote, please.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Alrighty, that takes us right along to matters. None specifically listed, so we'll go around the horn. Councilmember Brightigum.
You know what comes to mind immediately this weekend? The Strawberry Festival. We haven't, it's been two-year hiatus, so it's kinda nice. Get your strawberry on, get out there. It's a, you know, great event for our community, and I hope to see everybody there.
And likewise, looking forward to the weekend. Just want to remind everybody, we're moving into the summer again. You know, swimming pools, I have a pool. If you have, if you're having people over, relatives, even your own children, you've got to watch people in the pool, the small children in the pool can happen to an adult, too. So please keep an eye on your pools this weekend and moving through the summer. Thanks.
Deidre, to that, also strawberry, we have a series of events leading to Strawberry Festival, too. We have Strawberry Ball on Thursday night, and then we have Friday night, which is serving the cake, right? The traditions keep going. I'm excited to see everybody there for the cake. And then, of course, Saturday, although I do miss 5K stump, but we're gonna have parade, and then we have festivals. So I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you. Yes, please, let's make sure we get the 5K back for next year. Also, a couple PSAs. Please make sure to watch and monitor your water use. We are in a drought, and I know that the governor is looking to impose some restrictions soon if we don't adjust our water use. So please, you know, monitor yourself and the use in your family for your water. Vote. Make sure to do your civic duty and vote by June 7th. I'd like to see the city do some posts so that folks can know where their ballot drop box are and where they can go to vote in person. That information hasn't been shared, and we are 14Ds out. I think people are forgetting we're in the midterm elections, and there's a primary. So please, if we can get some information out, that would be much appreciated. And lastly, congratulations to my baby brother, who will be graduating from Villa Park High School. He is in Orange Unified School District, and he will be attending Cal Poly Pomona.
Right. Yay.
City Manager Scott Stiles.
Just one item, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Just to follow up on Item 7B, which was the actions related to catalytic converters. I wanted to let Councilmembers know that our police department is working and trying to work through an etching program, which some of you have heard about, about letting our community and folks come and get their catalytic converters etched. So don't have all the details worked out. They've been great at, at kind of. They've been great at kind of working that a little bit, so we'll be coming back to you more on that when we have, if we can hopefully pull it all together. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
General Counsel, anything to report out from closed session?
Yes, Mayor, we did have two closed session items, but there is no reportable action out of those items.
Thank you. Okay, sadly, I'd like to close tonight's meeting in remembrance and prayer for the 14 students and one teacher who lost their lives today in the horrific shooting at Rob Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas. Words cannot express the sorrow we feel as a result of this incomprehensible act. We will immediately be flying our flags at half-staff through sunset on Saturday, May 28th, to honor the victims of this terrible tragedy as part of the national remembrance. And with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you, everyone, and enjoy the rest of your evening.